All right, everybody. We're a little bit late. We were letting the crowds filter in. Uh, today is Tuesday. It is like the second to last month of the year, and then we'll be in another year. We'll see how that one goes. Um, we'll call this meeting to order real quick. We've got all commissioners present except for Mike Davis. Um, before we get started, I would like to ask you to stand if you can, and Marshall Alita's in a quick prayer and Kevin in a pledge of allegiance.
In the midst of all the challenges we think we face every day, let us take a moment to remember and give thanks for our first responder, medical staff, military, who are serving as we sit. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true and loyal Republicans, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Okay, so a couple of little quick things. First of all, cell phones should be muted, turned off. I just don't want to hear a whole lot of ding and ring, and if we can make that happen. Um, we have kind of a populated menu tonight. One item, item 4C, is listed as a public hearing, but it is not a public hearing. That is just a regular item, so that will not go through the formal public hearing process. Again, that is 277 Front Beach Drive. That's the plat amendment of lots 1, 2, and 3. Um, final note, we are going to do three public hearings. In that public hearing, we'll make a motion to go into public hearing. We'll get a commissioner, I'm sorry, a staff report. Uh, we will give the applicant 10 minutes to speak, and because of the crowds and because of the items, we're gonna give the applicant 10 minutes. Then we'll have 30 minutes for people in favor to speak, three minutes per person, and you can yield time. Then we will give 30 minutes to the opposition to speak, same rules, and then we will close the public hearing, and we'll give the applicant five more minutes to rebut as needed, and hopefully it makes sense when we get there. Um, item one, call meeting to order. We can check that one off the list for those keeping tabs. Item two is approval of minutes for the October 12, 2021. Um, what's the word, meeting? Does anybody review the minutes? Anybody have any comments on it?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Kevin. Second by Matthew. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's set those aside. No business. There is no old business, new business. Item 4A is gonna be 201 Front Beach Drive. Parcel ID is 61330003.000. Bill and Brenda Blackwell are requesting to construct a residence on a legal, non-conforming lot. I would assume this to be a Wade.
It is, but thank you.
Before.
Okay. And, um, the property itself, the vicinity is there on the screen. It is, um, you said it's a rule to construct a historically planted, legal, non-conforming lot. As you can see, if you would look to the survey of the property amendment, I can connect the third page. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. The lot is, uh, non-conforming in that it is only 95.37 feet wide, whereas the R1 zoning district it's in requires a minimum of 100 feet of width at the buildable line. So that's a four-foot, eight-inch deficiency, which is why it is before y'all tonight, and we'll go to the, have to go to the Board of Alderman, too. But at least in terms of size, it's over 24,000 square feet, so far exceeds the requirements of the R1 zoning district of 13,500. The main reason, the reason that that, um, lots like this go to the planning commission is to enable the, um, the city and the planning commission to make sure that the parcel has sufficient utilities and sufficient area available for building and off-street parking. As noted in the report, um, this was sent to the city departments for comment, and, uh, they had no issues with this. There are utilities available. The building department did note that it's in the BE zone, and that does limit as how the, uh, the building will be built on it. But other than that, there are no issues with this. That, uh, it is, um, suitable for a building of a single-family dwelling that complies with the side yard setbacks. So staff is recommending approval of the, uh, ability to build on this lot. Thank you.
Okay. Anything for staff before we open the floor? All right, so while that's formal, we do try to give the audience a minute or two to speak to any item. Is there anybody that would like to speak about the 201 Front Beach Drive, um, application? I usually would ask the applicant if they want to speak first. Is the applicant here? And does they want to speak? Does he want to speak?
He wants to see that.
Um, did you want to speak to that application?
Would like to show you the plans and tell you a little bit about what we wanted to do.
All right, uh, name and address up at the microphone, and try to keep it to about three minutes or so, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Blackwell, and my wife Brenda is with me. You see? And we purchased this lot approximately almost six years ago. We've been paying taxes on it ever since, trying to get plans arranged. Seems like things happened. COVID slowed it down. We've got the final plan with exception of work in drawing, because we came to a stop because of this meeting tonight. Uh, Duncan, can you help me holler these up right quick? While he's showing you that, being as I don't have the three minutes, I'll keep talking.
Yeah, all right.
The house is 75 foot wide. Rooms for the, there's a lot, I believe. Stay room for parking. We're not getting close to the BE zone. We're still on that further toward, and it's beach hill, it's green on the back. So, the house is about a little over 4,000 feet under roof. We think it's a beautiful house. We think it would be a nice settlement to have on Front Beach, and we hope y'all think so, too. And I'll answer any questions you might have. I think somebody asked for my address. It's 10 Summerwood Drive, Jackson, Mississippi, 39208. It's a press. We hope it will soon be 201 Front Beach. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, was anybody else that wanted to speak to this application? Anybody else? Item A, once, twice, sold. Any commissioners have any thoughts, comments, questions? All right, um, anybody want to take a stab at a motion on this one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Recommend approval to construct a dwelling on the historically planted, legal, non-conforming parcel at 201 Front Beach Drive, as described in the application.
All right, motion, Alan. Second Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So that got approved through, wise. You will be on next week's, next week's board will be the final say-so. So, you're good. All right. Moving right along. Item 4B is going to be 3314, 3316, and 3318 Nottingham Road. This is parcel ID numbers 61099105, 106, and 6109905800. Brown and Mitchell Alexander, on behalf of Singing River Health Systems, is requesting a final plat approval for replat of lots 58, 105, and 106 to the Fort Bay Estates Part IV subdivision. Wade?
Yes, okay. Uh, just to refresh your memory, uh, this came to y'all for a sketch and preliminary plat approval back on August 10th of this year, and then was approved by the Board of Alderman on September 27th of 2001. So this is the final plat for the replat of those three lots of that, um, area to, uh, be transferred to ownership of the hospital to enable them to add, um, add parking spaces for their, for their use. Also, part of this will be some, um, all these way private will be a fence and other stormwater, stormwater drainage improvements, and they will be coordinated through Public Works and the Building Department through a building permit. Uh, so that, I mean, that is the purpose of, of, uh, this final plat. Uh, staff is recommending approval of it. And Nick Gant is here, if you have any questions, as a representative of Singing River Hospital. And that's all I have to say, so any question, I'll be glad to answer.
I have anything, Wade?
Yeah, Wade, uh, are there any significant changes from the initial plat?
None whatsoever.
Did it move north at all, or?
No, no, this is the same, this is the same as the preliminary plat.
The only thing I don't see on here is the access to the substation, the pump station.
Uh, that will be.
Kind of a part of construction.
Let's see.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you notice on it, there's a, like a cutout on, uh, yeah, that, that is that, um, pump station. And you see that will, it'll be an easement, um, for access to that.
Yeah, I think, Nick, didn't you, weren't y'all gonna blackout space for that? Come on up, Nick. Name and address, please.
Nick Gant, Brown Mitchell Alexander, authorized agent on behalf of Singing River Health Systems. Um, yeah, so the way we're doing this is a little different because they don't own those parcels. We don't want to do improvements until we get the final plat approved, then the hospital owns it. Then we'll go through getting construction plans and coordinating all the improvements, that drainage crossing and access for, um, the sewer department.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll follow up with construction plans, go through Public Works.
Okay. You're good with that, right, James? You had it here first, guys. All right, anything else you wanted to say, Nick?
Not unless anybody has any questions.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak to the final plat for the Singing River, or I'm sorry, the Fort Bay Estates subdivision final replat? Any questions, comments, concerns up here? Any motions up here?
Make a motion.
All right.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat of the replat of lots 58, 105, and 106 of Fort Bay Estates Part IV subdivision as proposed in the application and plat submitted with the application.
Motion Kevin, second.
Second.
And that to you, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, and next week, final answer. All right, item C is gonna be not a public hearing, uh, just a regular old item for 227 Front Beach Drive. Parcel ID 61070001.000. James Carter requesting a plat amendment of lots 1, 2, and 3 of the DeAbreville subdivision. I'm assuming Wade again.
Correct. Uh, as you can see on the screen, these, this is actually, uh, three lots of the DeAbreville subdivision, which was dates from 1948. And, um, the, if you scroll down to the next one, that actually shows the, there, yeah, there you go, thank you. As you can see, there is a existing house on lots 1 and 2. They're on the west side, the left side of the screen, and also a house on, uh, lot 3 on the, the right side. The house on lot 3, um, extends, encroaches into the minimum building side yard setback from the side lot line, which leads to the, uh, what's going on here in that the, that shaded area is being swapped, basically, from lot 2 to lot 3. And that, in a nutshell, is what is being done here. It does have to go through this process because it is a planted subdivision, but staff is recommending approval of it in that the, while the, the lots as currently planted, dated from 1948, don't meet the requirements of the R1 zoning district, uh, they, this will make them more compliant than what they are right now. So, from that standpoint, staff's recommending approval of it, and, um, make it fluid. We'll be glad to answer questions.
Like anything? Yes, my question would be, and maybe it's a question for the applicant, why, why now? I mean, when, when were those houses built? Why is it coming up? I mean, is there? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Do you want to come, uh, say anything and, and answer why now, if you don't mind? Uh, name and address at the microphone, please.
Bobby Sargent, I'm the landscape architect for the, my client, James Carter, who is in attendance. The main reason is the, uh, well, the owner wants to, my client wants to, to sell off some property to, to, uh, do some improvements for his land, but also to allow his neighbor and friend, Joe Cox, who is in attendance as well, to be able to expand his property a little bit and build, he's planning to build a new home in the, in the near future. So it's just sort of a swap of the land a little bit. Uh, my client has two lots with a pool on the second lot mostly, and, uh, so they're basically trying to come, we're trying to combine that one lot into one for Carter, and then Cox getting another 10 feet. So, really, that's the whole reason for, for the, uh, 10 foot of width.
The intent would be to kind of collapse 1 and 2 into one lot?
Yes.
Okay, but that's not being.
No, that, that, what, it's one parcel now, but they don't have to change the lot lines to do that. It still remains one parcel.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. All right, anybody else have anything for the applicant? Nope. Anybody here want to speak either in favor or against? Uh, did you have anything else to say? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that's good. I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, I'll make, anybody got anything? Um, all right, anybody else want to speak about this application, for or against? Uh, name and address, please.
Emily Ryanlander, 406 Smith Drive. I'm, Smith Drive is a road that runs behind the subject property. I live on the east end of Smith Drive, and McNamie comes in, and one of my concerns is if the, if another residence is gonna be built on that property, the road coming in, McNamie and both Smith are barely passable now with cars that go in and out, and, um, I would be concerned of any additional construction going on there that's gonna bring more houses and more cars. It's gonna be difficult accessing McNamie because there are, uh, there are trees right in the middle of the road, and, um, that is my concern.
So, I'll answer to the best, and I'll, you know, please, if I'm wrong, um, I don't, they're actually kind of damning themselves in a way from being able to use the new lot, too, right? I mean, because they, they would not conform, so they almost can't.
Could not be a separate.
If they didn't do this, they probably could get away with it because it's already planted and whatever, but if they do this, they really can't.
Right, yeah. They're gonna lock themselves into a single functional lot even though it's made up two lots, yeah.
Right, and y'all agree? I didn't miss.
Yes.
Okay, so there, there shouldn't be a concern of that.
Okay, well, I appreciate that clarification.
All right, anybody else? This is on the Front Beach, James Carter, lot 1, 2, and 3, DeAbreville. Once, twice, sold. Um, anybody else have any thoughts, comments, questions? Once, twice, sold. Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
Make a motion. We recommend approval of the proposed amendment to DeAbreville subdivision to reconfigure lots 1, 2, and 3 as described in the application.
Motion Alan, second.
Second.
Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. That'll be on next week's board agenda. All right? All right, so, public hearings, again, we'll make a motion to go into public hearing. We'll hear from the, uh, staff. We'll have a quick little rebuttal for ourselves. We'll give the applicant about 10 minutes. We'll give 30 minutes to the opposition, 30 minutes to the, I'm sorry, 30 minutes to those in favor, 30 minutes to the opposition, three minutes per person unless somebody yields time. Uh, no need to repeat yourself. If somebody says we're worried about traffic and crime, you can just get up and say, "I agree with what they just said," and it'll be just the same as, as saying it yourself. Um, let's just try one and see how it goes. How about that? Uh, first one will be item 4D. That is gonna be 4414 Hanshaw Road. Parcel ID is 6012607000. It's K. Airland Mitrik. Requesting rezon from R1 low-density, single-family residential to R2 low-medium-density, single-family residential. Motion to go to public hearings.
Still move.
Motion Matthew, second. Kevin and Joe, I'll let you pick, Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Our Joe first. Okay, Joe. Um, all right, we are in a public hearing. Is this a Wade as well?
It is. Okay. Um, first off, a couple of other kind of housekeeping items. Um, I want to note there's an error on page 2, the second page of the report, uh, in that the, um, Yable Place subdivision has 194 lots rather than 234. That was a calculation error due to some odd, uh, lot numbering situations with all the phases. And two, um, we, we need a motion from y'all to accept some of the email, um, input that was received. Thank you for today.
Yeah, I was gonna bring up, well, you got, uh, so we, we, after the report came out, you should've got a second email that had a, after the packet came out, you got a second email with a report from Donovan Scruggs. Everybody get that email? Do you have a motion to accept that to the minutes?
Make a motion to accept.
Got motion, Joe?
Second.
Second, Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and I should've just looped this one in, but since I didn't, we'll go again. So we got an email sitting on our desk. Uh, when we got in here from Ashley, uh, do I want to, do I have a motion to accept this into the minutes? Uh, motion Kevin, second.
Second.
Uh, Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think we're good. Wade, that was only two things, right?
That's it, yes, you got it, okay. Thank you. All right, um, this is a 61-acre, um, piece of property being requested, as you noted, to be rezoned from the R1 single-family district to the R2, uh, low-medium-density residential district, which are both single-family districts. The only difference in, um, uh, there, um, is the difference in the size of lots that are, minimum size of lots that are required. R1 has a 100-foot of width and 13,500 square foot area. R2 is 80 feet of width and 11,250 square feet of area. The, um, just to refresh memory for any kind of rezoning, that the criteria for a zoning change are that, one, there was a mistake in the original zoning, or, two, the character of the neighborhood has changed to an extent to justify it. Uh, in addition, also, the applicant is on the, the burden's on the applicant to describe the need of the community for the rezoning. In this case, uh, the staff recommendation is for maintenance of the R1 zoning of the property and denial of the R2 proposed, uh, zoning change. Our reasons for that is that the, in looking at the subdivisions in the immediate, immediate neighborhood, uh, those, they were developed in a way consistent with the R1 zoning district regulations. They're in effect at that time. Yable Place is a conventional subdivision, because it's 194 lots, consistent with the R1 district. Now, Stillwater Block, while it is zone R1, it is a 14-lot planned unit development, um, that the overall density was maintained, well, for the R1 district was maintained, but there were, it did allow narrower lots in order to preserve open space. Now, also, if you would scroll down a little bit to show the, um, the, um, Spanish Cove subdivision there, Amanda, scroll the, pull the map down a little bit. Okay, yeah, the, um, you can see there on the bottom of that, of the screen is the R3 zoning district. That was a recent new development in the vicinity. That's the Spanish Cove subdivision that was rezoned to that R3 district, um, I think, like, four years ago, if I remember concerns me right, and it is totally built out at the present time. Also, a component of this request is that, because of, as you can see, the, a large part of the, of the property is within, um, wetlands. It's part of the, I think that's Davis Bayou, so that the conservation subdivision provisions of the UDC, possibly could apply to that. That would be done, uh, as part of the subdivision application, sketch plat application process for subdivision. That, uh, conservation subdivision provisions does require a minimum of 40% of total area be designated as a conservation area. In addition, in return for that, the lots within the conservation subdivision can vary up to 25% of the minimum area, minimum frontage, or minimum width, uh, for that zoning district. And in page 2 of the report, it gives you the, uh, what that means in practical sense for both the R1 district and the R2 district. That, uh, also, uh, the, uh, we did look at the comprehensive plan and how that, uh, would, would apply to this situation. And, uh, the comprehensive plan does recognize that there is a need for a mix of residential types. Uh, but also wants to, uh, ensure that lane uses of budding them are compatible with the scale, intensity, and overall character of the neighborhood. So in this situation here, I think the, the, what is the neighborhood is the, uh, key to, to, uh, the change here. Um, from staff's standpoint, we are looking at just the immediate area, a more narrow focus of neighborhood. Um, I think the applicant, Mr. Scruggs, will, uh, want to argue that that is a broader, he needs a broader definition of that. Um, and that's up to y'all as planning commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman as, do you feel that the, uh, there has been a change in the neighborhood or a mistake in the zoning, and is there a need for this rezoning? As I said, staff is recommending denial, uh, maintenance of the R1 district, but, uh, no, uh, Donovan Scruggs, planner with, uh, is representing Elliott Land Development, is here to make a presentation on it also, so. That's, I'll answer any questions you have, but I'll conclude my report.
Anybody have anything for staff before we open to the applicant?
Um, what was Spanish Cove property zone before the change in 2018?
It was owned R1.
Oh.
Yes.
And partially, that was done before the UDC was in place, so there was no conservation subdivision tool at the time. So it was the only option to work around the, it was, the defense of it was to work around the wetlands in the way that a subdivision, or conservation overlay would accomplish now.
Plus, it's since it's abuts, uh, unincorporated Jackson County on the south side of, uh, Spanish, Old Spanish Trail. Uh, my recollection is that there were subdivisions more comparable to that R3 zoning district within Jackson County, uh, in their zoning districts.
Anybody else? All right, my little spiel with every rezoning. Uh, just remember, we rezoned parcels, we don't rezon properties. So any rezoning will carry in perpetuity regardless of who, what, where, why. So just keep that in mind. Um, in this case, I don't know, we don't have a map of the proposed property in our packet anyway, so it's not as applicable here, but, um. All right, Donovan, let's try to keep her under 10 minutes here, and we'll open the floor after that.
I'll try my best. Andy, my name is Donovan Scruggs of 317 Pine Drive, and I've been asked to assist Ms. Rip, remember, on the rezoning of this property. Um, as I guess Wade alluded to, he and I may not see exactly eye to eye on, uh, some of the comments that were made in the details of his report. Property is 61 acres, 60 acres in size, which does contain a good bit of wetlands. Um, it also is, uh, located on the north side of Davis Bayou, which makes the property very attractive, especially along that lake with numerous waterfront lots. The, uh, property itself, um, is, um, you know, located there on Hanshaw, uh, Road, and it, we need to discuss, you know, discuss, you know, what the neighborhood is. Uh, the, the narrow focus that, well, Wade mentioned a minute taken is saying that basically it just is those that are in immediate proximity. However, you know, um, it's hard to discount that just to the north is Blossom Gas, uh, which is not part of his neighborhood. Uh, nor does it include the Circle K or the area that was recently rezoned in Davis Bayou to, uh, the CMX2. Of course, Stillwater Block, while, um, it is enlarged in a size that's consistent with the R1, uh, requirements, it did not meet the requirements of R1 and had to go the route of a PUD to get approved. I mean, it could not get a variance. It had to get rezoned technically to a PUD to be approved. Uh, and they did that, and now the lots of, with 75 feet width, in my opinion, does change in character. And of course, you look to the south, you also go on to see Spanish Cove. Spanish Cove, uh, is in the neighborhood. There's no two ways about it. Spanish Cove is part of this neighborhood because when you look at the size of that property, it's actually like saying that a 100-foot property can say that, uh, the next two properties down are in it. down are in it. It should be proportional. If I've got a piece of property that's basically 1,500 feet in size, then you should take that distance out at least and say, "That's part of my neighborhood." Because when you're dealing primarily in the country, in county tracts, you know, area gets a little bit bigger because you do have bigger tracts of land. This is a...basically, a large piece of property, 60 acres, and to say that it can't go 700 feet to the south is a little bit outside of my comfort zone. Now, and that property is, of course, zoned R3. Now, just like Wade said, with the consideration of what went in with Spanish Cove, this property abuts federal property. It's actually the easternmost property in the city that is developable. Everything to the south is privately owned, publicly owned. Everything to the north is either already developed or part of the Single River Electric Cooperative. So there is...this is a fringe property. There is nothing else on the other side of it. As he pointed out in his staff report, this will not lead to other rezonings. There's nothing more to happen here because it is the last piece of property on the east side of Hanshaw. This, you know, details a rezoning that was done not too long ago to CMX2. Now, there is nothing developed there, but the property does show that rezoning has occurred, and the only way a rezoning can occur is if there's a change in neighborhood character. So obviously, just a couple of lots of...there was a change in neighborhood character enough to warrant that rezoning. And, you know, this is a change in character. You know, you can look at the property and see, you know, just to the north of her site, the Circle K gas station, which dumps traffic onto Hanshaw Road. Also, the lost piece in the shopping center there, you know, through the shared access with the Circle K, also dumps traffic onto Hanshaw Road. So this is, you know, development within the neighborhood that I think should be noted, and it does create a more intense area surrounding Hanshaw Road. Of course, this is our nearest neighbor to the north, which is the substation, the electrical substation, and Blossman Gas. Blossman Gas has gotten to a little more retail recently. You can buy accessories for your green exit barbecue and also fill up your propane car with gas as well. When you look at this particular property here, it kind of shows you a progression of development over the past few years. You know, it shows you back in 1992, this property owner had the luxury of having no neighbors, and now they've got 195 of them, Wade, in Belemville Place. So when Belemville Place went in, it was a definite change in neighborhood character, and that occurred by 2004. All four phases were basically built out. Also, by '04, you can see the emergence of the middle schools to the south, which really is what generates the traffic. The traffic's not really generated by Belemville Place. It's not going to be generated by 70 lots here on this particular development. The traffic that's being generated is primarily a result of the middle school traffic and everybody from Gulfport and State's moving themselves, you know, out of here and going to work. But you can see in 2019, it had significant changes because you've had the gas station to the north, you've had the development of Stillwater Bluff directly across the street with smaller lots, and you also have the emergence of the Spanish Cove to the south. This is market-driven when you look at what's being done, and in fact, the planning commission and the city council have done a very good job at recognizing this. In fact, there's only been one development over the past 10 years that has been developed to R1 standard by the book, to R1 standards, and that's Maple Woods. That's the only one. Seaside of East Beach. Those lots don't meet R1. It has a R1 designation, but it's got lots that are barely over 10,000 square feet in size. So there's been a lot of...yeah, there's been a lot of calling something R1, even though that's not the way it was developed, just like we'd call Spanish Cove R1, and not Spanish Cove, Stillwater Bluff R1, even though it had to get a PUD to actually be approved that way. If it had to get a PUD to be approved that way, that means it does not comply with the standards. If it does not comply with the standards, it does have an impact or a change in the neighborhood character. And this is some images showing it, but what I want to say on this is that primarily the number of properties that are being developed throughout the city are R3 and RD. They're not R1. They're not even R2. There's only one development that was designed to R2 standard, and that was Casey Cove. So for the most part, this city has gone toward doing everything in a RD or R3 standard, and what we're asking for is a R2. You know, these are examples of the lot sizes that don't leave me code at Stillwater Bluff and also smaller lots along Seaside. This is our neighbor to the south, Spanish Cove, that has lot sizes that are in the neighborhood of 8,000 and 7,000 square feet, 800 square feet in size, much smaller lots to our south that do impact our neighborhood. This is another shot of Stillwater Bluff, just so you don't forget, 75 feet, does not comply. Now, what I did was looked at the developments that are surrounding us. Our particular proposal, 60 acres, 75 lots in that neighborhood, is going to have a density of about 1.25 units per acre. 1.25 units per acre. That's not dense, guys. That's not four, that's not two, that's 1.25 units per acre. Even if we go up to 79, we're going to be at 1.31 units per acre. Belemville Place is developed at 1.77 units per acre, a much higher density. Stillwater Bluff, 175 per acre, a much higher density than what we're asking for, and then those four Spanish Coves at 3.1. So, you know, this conservation subdivision that we're going in, it may have smaller lots if we're approved that way, because we have to come before you and before the Board of Aldermen to get that approval. But I mean, we're still looking at overall development plans that's going to be much less dense than our neighbors. And while we ask on this route, the wetlands that trickle up through this development are all over the place, and we need a little bit of giv to actually make this happen. Apparently, that was the premise that went with Spanish Cove when it was developed, and we're asking for that same consideration. Not...but we do have a need for it, but like I said, it is based on the change in neighborhood character. But as you can see, leaving these wetlands intact definitely make it very hard to develop to the standards of R1, which would be 100-foot lots, which would probably cut this down by, you know, 15 to 20 lots. And the project would just simply not be feasible. Here's the distances I've looked at. No...we're, what, 650 feet from...can't read, I'm getting old. 350 feet from Blossman Gas, 650 from the CMX zone, and 700 feet from Spanish Cove. You know, Spanish Cove actually has access directly onto Hanshaw Road by that secondary access road. So it does have access to it, and so it is a neighbor along Hanshaw Road. This goes back to what I mentioned earlier about the 1,500 feet, the way you need to look at it. You know, if we're 1,500 feet in size, I think you ought to at least consider my neighbor within 1,500 feet of me.
Can you go wrap it up, Donovan?
I'll do my best. I'm getting very close. This is something I do want to talk about, and I'll do as fast as I can, because y'all just approved it tonight. You actually authorized a change in zoning for the hospital on a lot split, meaning that a change in a subdivision actually warranted a reason to rezon. That's a line on a map that really wasn't approved until tonight. So lines on maps matter. So even if we say that Hanshaw...Spanish Cove accesses onto Old Spanish Trail, the lines on the map, the R3 lines, are within 700 feet, and therefore should matter for a change in neighborhood character. A lot of stuff on housing. Look, there's only five houses, about five houses for sale between $250,000 and $300,000, $500,000 in the city. Very, very limited housing available, and y'all have no lots. There is not a subdivision out there that's ready to develop today. Nobody can build 50 houses next year or the following year unless some subdivisions are approved. This is from Vazilo and from Realtor.com. So I do want to mention, and I'll be as fast as I can, because I know that the people from Belemville Place want to know what's going to happen. What we're talking about doing here is houses that are going to be about $365,000 in value. That's the price we're looking at right now. It's probably going to be valued at more by the time they're actually constructed. The...they're going to be predominantly brick. There will be some hardy board on there, but it's not going to be some of the vinyl or some of the epist that you see in other areas. I looked at the numbers on Vazilo. I'm not sure how accurate that is, but it looks like the numbers in Belemville Place were like 130, 140, 150 in square footage. This is going to be about 170. So we do plan to put out a very, very good product if we're allowed to move forward with this. They will not be the 3,000, 4,000 square foot houses you have in Belemville Place, but they will be quality homes, which is really what people are looking for nowadays. We...to address traffic, our access points are planned to line up with Build-O-Place and with the Big Ridge or High Ridge Drive. That will give us the opportunity for a four-way stop or a roundabout if the CDC sees it necessary to do something to alleviate those concerns. So we do want to work with the neighborhood, our neighborhood that's across the street and the ones to the south of us, and hopefully put together a project that would make everybody happy. Tons of reason for public need. I've gone through those, but basically what we're asking for is that you just tell Rob and Ricky and the other members of the plan, of the Board of Aldermen, to recommend approval or accept the recommendation for approval for this project based on the change in neighborhood character and of the evidence of public need that we demonstrated in my report and here tonight. And I'm sorry if I'm long-winded, but y'all probably expected that when I got up here.
And for record's sake, you only say Rob and Ricky because they're in attendance tonight, right?
Oh, they're here.
All right. Anybody have anything before we go to the floor? Donovan, you did pretty well on time. I'll have to give it to you. All right, so again, we will open it up to those who want to speak in favor of it first, and then we will close that down. We're going to limit that to 30 minutes total, three minutes per person, unless somebody wants to concede their time. Otherwise, and after those in favor, we will then open it to those opposed. We'll then close the public hearing. We'll give the applicant five more minutes just to rebut, not to continue on his presentation, but to speak to any items brought up, and then we will take over from there. Does anybody in the audience want to speak in favor of...come on, Doug. Name and address the microphone, please.
All right. I'm Doug Malino, 2701 English Drive, and I'm a real estate broker on this project, so I've been involved with this property for a long time, and I've looked at a lot of proposals that have come across our desk for review from local developers on up to D.R. Horton. And I can honestly say that this plan that Brandon Elliott's put forward is the best plan I've seen to create the nicest neighborhood for our city, and it preserves the wetlands of their natural state, which I think is super critical. The density, according to 1.25 lots per acre, is really 63.59 acres. It's actually less density than 1.25. If every lot got the same amount of property, you know, 75 lots and 63.5 acres, every lot would be about 0.85 acres in size. So the density is so low, I think it's a no-brainer to, you know, to approve it, because it's well under the density of typical R1, even R2. The last thing I want to say, and I want to reiterate anything that Donovan has said, but I do echo everything he said with the change in the character of the neighborhood and the public need. But this property is so isolated, when you really look at it, to the east and to the south, is 1,100 acres of government sandhill crane preserve. To the north is the railroad tracks, which is a very natural barrier. You've got the bayou running on three sides of the property, Hanshaw running down the west side of the property. Nobody would have any clue as to how big lots were in there driving down Hanshaw. You'd have to live there to even know about the small areas that they're requesting from R1 to R2. You just wanted to see it. Lot sizes these days have very little to do with values of properties. Mulberry Place is a prime example. Those are R2 lots, very small, large houses, most expensive in the area. So I don't think that the...I feel very strongly that this development that he's proposing is going to add to our community and a product that we so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Name and address of the microphone, please.
Jason Gardner, 2501 Belemville Boulevard. I'm just here to say that I do think there's a great need for housing in this market. Having a child that just got to move back home from living out of state, we got to looking for housing, and it was virtually impossible. As Donovan pointed out, there were only five available houses, you know, at a certain price point at that time. And I am a real estate professional, and I can concur with both Doug and Donovan's, you know, statements about the lack of housing. And I did have a chance to look at this property as well. At the end of the day, Mr. Elliott's plan to develop this property is great. He's avoiding the impact of the wetlands. If I would have had an opportunity to try to develop this thing, I would have tried to mitigate wetlands and things like that, and frankly, I would have done more harm to the area and what's going on than he is, because he's trying to avoid the impact of the wetlands. It causes him to have to develop slightly smaller lots, but as Doug mentioned, the lot size doesn't matter anymore. So Mr. Elliott builds great houses. I have friends in those houses. They're great additions to the neighborhood, and so I'd be totally in favor of this development.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor of...want to speak? Name and addresses, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Carolyn Mittrick. My parents bought that property in 1945. Time has gone by. Mr. Elliott has done a remarkable job of putting a beautiful, beautiful plan for that property. It's something that I need to do at this time in my life because I'm alone. I don't need 60-plus acres, and I don't need the huge house that I'm in, but that's not the point. The point is, the development project is beautiful, and I hope that it is approved, and I would recommend it very, very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kevin. Anybody else in favor of...name and address, please.
I'm Faith Williston, 104 Kirkland Drive, and I want to echo everything that's been said so far. I really am excited to see a developer come in and be concerned about the wetlands and our little animals that crawl around that we all love so much. So I would encourage you to reconsider your negative report to the commission, and I would encourage you to approve the rezoning.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else in favor of...
Hi, Brandon Elliott. I'm the developer, and I just came today to answer any questions. Obviously, I'm in favor, but I wanted to make sure if there was questions of what we're doing out there that I was here to answer.
Name your address real quick for the...
1118 East Beach Boulevard, Gulfport and City.
Okay. Well, Brandon's up. Y'all have anything now? And we'll give you five minutes after, too, so we can...
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Anybody got anything before he sits? Once, twice sold? All right. Anybody else in favor of the application? As...once, twice sold? All right. We all made your 30 minutes? Let's see. All right. Opposition to...30 minutes, three per person, and feel free to reiterate what the last person said. Do I have anybody in opposition to? All right, that's all yours first. Name and address of the podium, please.
I'd like to give you a copy of my paper.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beebe Walz, and I represent the Homeowners Association for Belemville Place. Some of the things that Mr. Scruggs spoke of, he's already answered that were in my concerns, that, for example, we have a concern about what the value on the homes would be, and he's already addressed that. We're concerned also with the increase in traffic, and as he said, a lot of it has to do with the school, you know, that drives the traffic down on Hanshaw Road, but still, that is a concern for ours. We also have a concern about the access between the two because of the two subdivisions being across from each other, and I believe he addressed that also about trying to line them up so that we can get in and out without so much difficulty. He mentioned something about a traffic...I believe it was referred to as a traffic circle. Perhaps there would be consideration to put up a stoplight or a traffic light, and in doing so, also make it so that there would be a safety switch so that students crossing the highway could control the traffic for safety reasons. We were concerned about the home sizes and the property values and the construction of those homes, and he's addressed all of those answers, so we have those already. But we're still concerned about the impact on the traffic flow and the size of the lots. I may not have understood his explanation about the 75 properties. If it stayed as an R...if it was an R2, it would be 75 lots on 60 acres, but I understand, and if I'm incorrect, please stop me if I'm incorrect, but if I understand about the conservation subdivision that is addressed in this package, if it's converted to an R2 under the conservation change, those lots would be a width of 60 feet, and it would downgrade the size of those lots to 8,437 square feet. So they would be significantly smaller lots than what exists in an R1 without a conservation, and significantly smaller than what would be across the street from Belemville. than what would be across the street from Beenville Place. Am I incorrect about my assumption on the subdivision?
Let's not talk to the audience--
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm gonna pause your time real quick, and so I don't penalize you. No, you're not mistaken. One thing I want to reiterate, and it's kind of applied to some pro comments too, but again, we're not considering the Elliott project, and that's like a double-fold thing. So we do, I mean, traffic could increase, right? But today, we're changing the color on a map, right? So it could be Elliott's project as presented, but it also could be, you know, if that deal fell through--
Somebody else.
It could be somebody in the future. So I do want to mention, though, as far as like the traffic concerns, I'm gonna call James out, because that's my favorite thing to do. James is right behind you. He's a city engineer. As far as traffic, water in sewer, and I thought you had one other, maybe I'm mistaken, but the next step, if this was approved, and Brandon goes through with it, the next step would be what they would call a sketch plat, and that's kind of like a conceptual layout. That's where we actually get to map. That's when James is gonna earn his keep by looking into traffic impacts, by looking into water and sewer impacts, by looking at grading and drainage. So, you know, it's a consideration. I mean, and, you know, we have to consider that as kind of just in generals. But just know that we understand traffic could increase. We just don't know. James doesn't know. Nobody here knows how much, but there's still the sketch plat after that. There's still the preliminary plat after that. There's still final construction review after that, and then there's final plat after that. So there's still four hurdles that are really gonna affect the traffic, the water sewer, and that kind of thing. There's one other thing, and I'm sorry I'm forgetting, but just, yeah, keep in mind, we're not talking about the Elliott development. We're talking about whether or not this map should be blue, or I'm not sure what R2 is, but, you know, what the zoning on top of it is. Okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
Well, I appreciate your time on that. We're just concerned about what that development will look like compared to what's across the street with Beenville Place, and what impact whoever builds that development out, what it will do to our subdivision if it's taken down to an R2, which would decrease the size of the lots as opposed to an R1.
Right. And so, but, I'm sorry, I didn't say this. The sketch plat would come here. It would be in public hearing, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, we would, you, everybody would have a second crack at it, and then the preliminary plat would be a third crack at it. So just keep that in mind. The other thing I meant to say is, yes, your math was right, 8437 conservation subdivision. Oh, that was right.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lost my train of thought. All right, anybody else want to speak in opposition? I saw this hand right here. Come on up, name and address, please.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. I'm Chanel Blom. I live at 4005 Belter Court, which is in Beenville Place. Thank you for pointing out that this rezoning is not for this project, because that was definitely a concern, and I know there's been apparently lots of accolades on this project, but we don't know that that's what's going to end up there. If there was really a need to, or if they were going to keep it at 1.25 homes per acre, I think was what they said, why do they need to rezone this? You can have one to three homes per acre. So I realize that the lot lines may be part of the issue, but--
I'm gonna pause you, because that came up twice. So the 1.25 is in total, right? So that does include all the wetland areas that are remaining. So it's not saying that it's, you know, 1.25 the actual lot, so it's overall divided by the number of houses. So it's, they're giving a lot more open space than would be required, and reducing the lot sizes--
Well, I disagree with the brokers that spoke in favor of that size matters.
Okay.
I would also just like to point out, I believe that this UDC was just done in 2019. Is that correct?
Yes.
So these big changes that everyone's talking about are changes since 2019. This is not something that was done 10 or 20 years ago. What has changed since 2019? Do we need homes? If we need homes, it's R1. Go build homes. Just build them in accordance with an R1. There was an argument by Mr. Scruggs that, well, none of these other subdivisions that you've approved, except for one, are true R1 zones. Well, what's the point of having R1 zoning if you're not going to make anybody comply with it? And we would ask my husband, and my husband is here, Mike Blum, and he yielded his three minutes to me also.
That true, Mike? Have a Mike Blum with the same address, and he said he conceded. He signed it. All right, keep going, Ms. Kim.
Right. Thank you very much. The wetlands, yes, that's going to be a problem for any developer, but that is not a change in circumstances. They've been there. This is a really heavy burden that is required, as y'all know, to rezone property. Mississippi law requires, not recommends, but requires, there must be an error in the initial zoning or a change in the character of the neighborhood to such an extent as to justify this reclassification. I don't know what has been so drastically changed in two years, but I also don't think that there was an error in your zoning just two years ago, although this property has been apparently under R1 requirements before that, as I understand it. As far as the adverse impacts, traffic will be impacted. It is just a matter of how much. I did pull some MDOT, and if I could put one in the record, please, MDOT traffic counts. I couldn't get the whole thing. If y'all could, I've got a couple, if I may approach. Henshaw Road, the traffic counts per MDOT are at 10,000 cars a day. If you'll look, that's the most of any road in Ocean Springs, except for Highway 90, the highest traffic as it is. Is it in part because of the school? Yes. Is it in part because there has been development on Highway 90, such as the Shell Station and the shopping center there, which admittedly, by Mr. Donovan, pours traffic, dumps traffic, I think was the word, onto Henshaw? Yes, traffic is increasing there. It's going to increase more with an R1 subdivision. It doesn't need to increase by an R2. And I just ran some figures, and I realize this doesn't take into account streets and open space and all, but if you just take the 63 acres, what they would be allowed, three per acre in R1, 189 homes, and in R2, 252. So we're looking at an additional 63 homes there. I think 189, or whatever they can fit in there, is probably going to be sufficient to satisfy any need in housing and eliminate the traffic problems. There was a suggestion about a light. Well, where's the light going to go? If they line up with Cabildo, two houses down is my outlet onto Henshaw, which is Bergerac. How is that going to be handled? Traffic getting out in the mornings is a nightmare. In the evenings, it's a nightmare. They've already moved the school zone, and cars still speed through it. They don't care. Maybe that's a way that the city could make some money, to have some more enforcement right there. But it's a problem, and it's a problem that's documented in that MDOT report that you have. I've been asked by a neighbor that works at the schools to point out that our schools are overcrowded. I don't have any independent data on that, but I promised her I'd say that. Of course, we're worried about property values, because we don't know. That may be a great development. Their property values may be more than ours, but we have no idea right now that that's what is going in there. Drainage has become an issue over the last few years. It never was. I've lived there since 2000. It's never been an issue until the last couple of years. I don't know what would affect that will have, but I'm sure it will have some effect anyway.
Say, you've got about one minute left on Mike's time.
I'll yield my three minutes to her.
All right. I need your name and address--
Well, I've been rushing.
Band-Aid, 4002 Belter.
Did you get that, Amanda?
No.
Yes?
No. What was the name again?
Band-Aid, B-A-Y.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now you've got four minutes.
Okay. Well, I can slow down a little bit, maybe. I've been trying to rush through it. Stillwater has been discussed. It's a very nice subdivision, probably nicer than our subdivision, but still, the density is not the same as in R2. I think y'all said that even though it's a PED, it's still, the lot lines are changed, but the density is not. Still, there's more traffic coming out of there, though. Spanish Cove rezoned to R3. I don't consider them my direct neighbors. This lot is my direct neighbor. So I don't think that, I wouldn't consider that as far as a change in characteristics of the neighborhood, but in any event, we're talking about 2009 again, not way back. I would just, I know y'all have a copy of the zoning map, but it's, there's a lot of R1 there, and we would just ask, at least my husband and Band-Aid and I would ask that you keep that zoning as R1.
All right, anybody else in opposition to? All right, red shirt, name and address of the microphone, please.
Chris Kennedy, 201 Bluff Cove. Again, Stillwater, HOA, Stillwater Bluff, HOA President. And talking about Stillwater, our lots in there, although they are smaller, they're still 15,000 square feet. And one of the concerns, I've got several people from the neighborhood here, we're all opposed to it, and I think the consensus of our neighborhood is to stay a R1. And one of the things that, you know, the fine print, whether whoever develops the property, even if it's an R1, you can still take it down, I think, to 10,125 feet per lot on the wetlands.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So R2 takes it down, what, 2,000 feet more? So if you got down to 8,000 feet, you could almost put two homes on the lot size I have right now. And I do, to me, the bayou is a natural barrier. I don't consider Spanish Cove part of our area, and the same with the railroad tracks. To me, that's all commercial out there. You've got some old homes, but most of that is becoming commercial. You've got the, all the development out on 90. Nobody's gonna put a house up there. And also with the value, like she said earlier, I've got a lot invested in it, and, you know, maybe it'll be good. I don't know. I'd like to keep it at a R1. People in Ocean Springs that come here, they are willing to pay more. I mean, you can see that everywhere around here. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in opposition to?
I can go, but I'm not as well-versed as everybody else. I'm just a plane teacher. 3712 Cabildo Place, Ocean Springs, Mississippi. My name is Valvina Caldwell. A lot of people have talked about rezoning and all that. Having more houses as a teacher, it will impact the school system, okay? Also, I have lived in that neighborhood since 1996. I can tell you the traffic nowadays, even in our neighborhood, is horrible. Henshaw Road has become very dangerous. I have a 13-year-old that prefers to walk every day, but to cross that road, today he had to call me because people would not stop. The light would not go on. So he couldn't cross the street. It's like, Mom, call me, come pick me up so you can cross the street for me. I was like, no, I'll just take it to school. I will be late at school, but you will be safe. But it's ridiculous at this point to me. At 4:00, when he gets out of school, he crosses that road, and he's like, Mom, these people don't stop. People can't let us cross. And it's a group of them. It's not just my kid that walks around. So it's not just rezoning an area, having more houses. It's the impact that it makes, and the danger that our kids see every day, or have to go through it every day. The light today wasn't working for the speed light. I mean, I know this is totally different, but the more houses you have, the more people you will have, the more resources they will need. So I believe that you need not to rezon this. That's why I'm in opposition to that. And also, you need more security on your road for my kids to cross the street.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to speak in opposition to?
Well--
Name and address of the microphone, please.
James Grace, 3718 Bergerac, Beenville Place. I'll make it short. I agree with everything everybody's just said now. I'm opposed to it, mainly because of traffic. You have to think about it. Once you turn south on Henshaw, you can't make a left until you get to middle school. But as soon as you get one person making a left there, traffic's gonna back all the way back up. I know this is not about traffic, but I see that happening. It's, like everybody said, it's bad enough already. So think about that. Maybe put an access in from Highway 90, buy a lot there, and put a new railroad across. I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition to? Name and address of the microphone.
Hi, my name's Craig Joe Akam. I live in 203 Bluff Cove. I do live in Stillwater. I'm also a former member of the Planning Commission. Simple, sweet. Put your faith in these people. They've made a recommendation. Do it.
Okay. Anybody else in opposition to, opposed to, does not want to see it rezoned? Name and address of the microphone, please.
3718, I'm gonna say agree with everybody. 3718 Bergerac, Martha Grace. Now, you do agree with everybody. Everybody have said, I do oppose to be rezoning. I think that will affect our neighborhood, the Beenville Place. I'm gonna say, I do take the recommendation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grace. All right, anybody else opposed to, opposition? Anybody? Once, twice sold? Do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
You only get five minutes?
After we get out of public hearing. All right, motion by Matthew, second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are opposed. We are out of public hearing, and yes, we will give the applicant five minutes just to address the concerns and items addressed by the opposition or the proponents, if you'd like.
Part for all, spot off, but with the comments that I have some agreement with. Donovan Scruggs, 1701 Drive, here in Ocean Springs. I believe somebody said there has been no change in circumstances of the wetlands. Anybody that has anything to do with wetland or developments knows that that's just not the case. The way you developed in 1990s was simply go out and mitigate wetlands, and you did that in a fairly quick process. Today, I don't even know if Army Corps is still working. I think they're still on COVID break. And then the opportunity to actually mitigate wetlands is more along a 18-month process to do anything of this size. It is not like it was in the 1990s. Therefore, Beaville Place basically developed on 100% of its property. That's why you have the 1.75%, the 1.75 units per acre, because they actually utilized every bit of their property and was able to mitigate the wetlands. We're not doing it that way. We're going to actually leave the wetlands intact, leave them alone, and therefore, we're going to be much, much lower in density. And by doing that, yes, it does require some reconfiguring of lot sizes to make those smaller. I know there's a bunch of folks from Stillwater Bluff here in opposition of it. I don't know if they were here the last time a project came before this body, before Henshaw Road, which was Stillwater Bluff. And I think Marshall was here. I don't think anybody else was. Beaville Place came out in strong opposition against that development as well. So the same things that's going to happen, you know, with Stillwater Bluffs, more traffic, smaller lots, we don't know the value, please vote it down. And Stillwater Bluff turned out to be a great project. It's a great, great neighborhood. So, you know, yeah, there's a fear of the unknown, but everybody knows that people want to live in Ocean Springs. We're not going to do a project that is less than superior, because that's what's expected here in the city. But I do think that we're going to, you know, make everybody happy with our proposal. We are talking about a zoning change here. The zoning change we're asking for is to R2, 11,250. If we're able to come in and ask you guys for a conservation subdivision, and if you give it to us, it's gonna be based on the plan we provide. If we come in and say we're going to build a bunch of 8,200-square-foot lots, and we're going to smack them in there as tightly as we can, and it's going to, we don't care what it looks like, because we're going for density, if you guys approve it, you need to lose your jobs, because that's not what we're going to do. I mean, we're going to provide you something that can sell, and something that the people in Ocean Springs want to see. So, no, we have just not this buy-ride opportunity to come in and say-- So no, we have just not this buy right opportunity to come in and say, "We want to do 8,200 square foot lots because now we have a R2 zoning." That's just not the case. The traffic impacts for R1 to an R2 with 10,000 cars today won't even be noticed. A subdivision will, I'm not going to say that, you know, 65, 75 units aren't going to be noticed, but the minimal difference between 65 units and 75 units, or 58 units and 68 units, is going to be very, very minimal. So keeping this as R1 basically going to kill the project, and you won't get a guy who's coming in saying, "I'm going to save the wetlands, and I'm going to try to do this as nicely as possible." Brandon Elliott builds good homes, there are developers out there that don't build good homes. So I do think that this project is something that would enhance Hansell Road, it will enhance Ocean Springs, and it will enhance the neighborhood that extends all the way from Highway 90 to Spanish Cove. So that's my points, I'll be happy to answer any questions you got, I do want to point out that I gave you a book to read, I want to believe that if Wade had the opportunity to read that book, his recommendation would have been a little more positive, a lot further away from the denial. I'm not saying he would, he may not have liked it anyway, I mean, it may have put him to sleep, but I do know that it was put in, turned in late last week, he did not have the opportunity to review it, and therefore, it's not part of his review process. So Craig, he may have actually been able to give me a positive recommendation, had he had the opportunity to look at that. It's not false, not letting Wade forth, but it is a fact that I do want to point out.
Okay. While he's up here, has anybody got any questions, comments, concerns for him, or Brandon for that matter? Okay, thank you, Donovan.
Thank you.
All right, guys, let's hear some discussion.
See a lot of notes here.
I think whatever development does end up here is going to be a conservation development, which is going to reduce those lot sizes even farther, or the allowance, those lot sizes even farther.
But that's not what we're looking at.
Yeah, I would say you can't really, I don't think we can factor that in.
I think the wetlands does factor into what this parcel was zoned.
Would you say your point is not that it will, but that it could, right? That if we did rezone it to R2, they could use it as a CS?
To get rid of the 60 feet of furniture on a lot.
But the cost of that is a 40% turnover of land, or not turnover, but.
Conservation.
Yeah.
We don't even know the amount of wetlands on the property, and we're looking at what's in the flood zone, it's not sure what's wetlands. I mean, that's the floodway, right? It's not the, it's not the wetlands necessarily.
Yeah, the orange on that map would be, assume Wade, that's the 100-year flood line on the orange.
That's correct, that's, the orange is the AE zone that went under your flood line.
You can build it there.
Does anybody here think this was a mistake to zone it R1 in the first place?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't think we're, I don't think anybody's arguing for a.
It was a mistake, so we can take that one off the table.
Yep, I think our charge is, what is the neighborhood, and has that neighborhood changed significantly enough to justify, has the character of that neighborhood changed, to justify a rezoning? My understanding, Wade, Carolyn, correct me if y'all know differently, there is no definitions of neighborhood, it's kind of at the city's discretion, I mean, obviously, there's some, if we can't say downtown, just install a new building.
It's case by case, that's what has to be determined.
Yep, it's what you consider to be the neighborhood, and.
When was Stillwater built in?
It was, what was it, 2014?
So before the adoption of UDC?
Correct. Well, it was, it was done as a PUD, at that time, the Planning Development Regulations were still in effect.
One thing I want to mention, and Carolyn, please correct me if I'm wrong, but R1 and R2, they came in basically verbatim, correct?
You mean into the UDC?
I'm sorry, yeah, 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 from the old code to the new code.
Correct. The only thing I think they changed with R2 was setbacks, but size, dimensions.
Size and dimensions were the same.
Were the same, and I can't even remember if the setback changed.
I think that they were brought over from the previous regulations, just as they were.
Well, because I know, I remember we had them slated to change, and that was one of the changes we changed.
They did not change.
Were changes we unchanged?
Yes.
So I don't know that we can just completely draw a line down a sheet of paper at 2019 until you're, to that point, Kevin, as far as, you know, I don't, I don't think the rules changed significantly to say that the UDC either negatively or positively changed the character of the neighborhood in this situation.
Right, I'm just thinking, if we're saying the neighborhood has changed, the only thing that has changed is Spanish Cove, that's really going to change.
The amount of traffic in Hansell, I mean, I think there's other things you can take into account.
I don't, yeah, I wouldn't agree, the only thing that's changed is.
What's happening in that area, I mean, it's very limited.
Well, there's no time stipulation that I'm aware of, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've never heard of a time stipulation, I would actually think that a neighborhood would, it should gradually, like, it shouldn't sharply change, right? So I think a change in character should, I mean, I would say Stillwater, I mean, whether or not it changed the neighborhood to R2, it was a change in character of the neighborhood, now whether or not it's enough to justify, that's, that's our question here, but I would think that, you know, anything you consider in the neighborhood within the last 20-plus years should be eligible or considerable.
I mean, I think there's a change in the neighborhood based on what's going on even outside of the city that's causing the traffic to increase on Hansell. I mean, if you're looking at all the development in Jackson County that is going, that's using Ocean Springs metal.
Alan, can you play your microphone?
Oh, it's going through, you know, going to school, those sorts of things, and being there in.
Don't be afraid of the microphone.
South Jackson County, that's where it's.
Can I have a man to pull that up on the big screen? Did you get the zoning map up?
It's really citywide. You didn't just read them?
If your argument is that Hansell Road in and of itself is part of the neighborhood, I would agree with it, I don't think we would consider something, you know, the actual development of it as a, you know, if you're trying to link the impacts of Hansell Road, that could be considered.
I think a lot of the issues you're brought up, you know, are more about that than they are about developments that have occurred.
While he's doing this, I want to clarify one, one statement I made earlier that may have sounded weird, the traffic impacts, the reason I don't think we can consider it now is, to Donovan's point, it is about, maybe not quite 18 months, but something this big could be an 18-month wetland deal, but somebody could effectively, probably not, but could build the entirety of those 60 lots in an R1 fashion and get double the 75 lots they're proposing. So the traffic really can't be considered till later as far as what those actual impacts are. Go ahead, what was your point, Matthew?
I mean, my point is, looking at it, is the really only R2 that is existing in the city right now is down, you know, in Bechtel and Fort Boney Estates, a little bit on Riley Road, and then you go back on CC Road, and that's pretty much it on the R2. Pretty much everything adjacent to the proposed property is all R1, I mean, so, I mean, I'm not seeing a big character change right now to justify it on my part.
You don't consider Spanish Cove then part of that?
Spanish Cove was a little bit of a different, how the property was set up in itself, and we didn't have the, we didn't deal with the wetlands.
We didn't have the conservation overlay option at that time.
Can we, well, but are we taking that into account right now, that we have that, and that was to prevent future zoning changes?
Well, the conservation overlay really kind of took the place of what the PUD had been intended to do, which is provide flexible configuration and lot sizes if you are preserving wetlands and staying away from them, that was kind of the intention. So when the PUD was, was dissolved, and we were doing the UDC, this was kind of what took its place to accomplish that and allow for smaller lots in exchange for staying, you know, giving the conservation subdivision, but without increasing density, just allow for the flexibility of lot sizes. And that's what, Stillwater did not have that option, they had the PUD, and Spanish Cove didn't have either, so, just to keep that into perspective when you're using these terms, and what, what they had accomplished or were mean, meant to accomplish.
And I guess at that point, we are supposed to take it into account, then.
Well, any property is eligible for a conservation overlay, I mean, if they meet the criteria, so it's not just for this property, or it's just, it's a tool that's in the toolbox for a property that has a substantial amount of wet areas or official wetlands, so that they can, with the same amount of density, still provide those smaller lots in exchange for staying away from the sensitive, pristine wetlands area. So that is an option to them regardless of zoning.
Right, yeah, and I guess I'm having trouble kind of putting those things together, because if you're looking at it, what we're looking at right now, we're not technically aware of the plot, we're not aware of the amount of wetlands, we're not aware of anything, but we're trying to take that into account.
Of what could happen.
How that could happen, so what am I supposed to use as those?
Well, I think it's like Wade said earlier, and Andy may have hit on it, when you rezoned the property, it permanently changes the, what you can and cannot do on the property regardless of who, who owns it, so that's what you all are supposed to take into account is what could happen.
But not inferring what's, what the property actually is, what the amount of wetlands are.
Right, and you don't have that information.
But the conservation subdivision is also aimed at, I mean, I don't know if these words are in it, but it's basically known to have an increase in density, I don't know that that's required, but you say, hey, you get a little bit smaller lots, but you got to give up 40%, and that's substantial, right? So, you know, this would be a means to get a little bit more density in there, now from what they're.
With a conservation, or just in general?
The rezoning would allow higher density.
Well, it wouldn't matter about the conservation, because the conservation should not affect density, now I'm not doing the math to tell you that it's down to the single lot for it, but in theory, the conservation subdivision doesn't allow more density, so it doesn't matter, it's either R1 with it or without, or R2 with it or without, either way, R2 will allow it, and again, it's the property, I mean, somebody, this is, I'm going to be a little bit facetious here, but we could rezone this to R2, and then, you know, Brandon could just go build his one house on there, you know, maybe you want 60 acres to live on in the middle of Ocean Springs for some reason, and that would be allowed, or somebody could come in and demo every last bit of wetlands and, you know, put 200, what is this, Janelle, was that you, 200 and something, which, again, that's not going to happen either, so it's going to be somewhere in the middle of one house and 200 and however many.
Y'all got anything down on that end of the table?
Come on, Marshall, I know you've got something to say.
I'll pass on it. It was me using something that, I don't know, we can't take conservation, because we don't know what's going to happen to it, but if you started with R1 and applied conservation, you kind of got an R2 out of that, like a pocket R2.
As far as size of lots?
Yeah, which is, I guess, the intent of it, but it's hard to take that into account if we're not taking that into account at this stage, too.
But again, the conservation is at the, you know, our discretion ultimately, but at the discretion of the developer to use, and we just, I mean, really can't, you know, we had one time, and we didn't even make the reversion clause, we don't do reversion clauses on zoning, I don't even need that signal.
It's discouraged, at the very least, yeah.
Right, like we had promises, or not promises, but things said about 1.25 per acre and things like that, it doesn't really matter, it's all.
Even conditional zoning is not something that we.
We just, I mean, the short of it is, we can't consider the project, we have to consider the property. Is the neighborhood changed, you know, the character of the neighborhood changed over the last 5, 10, 15, 20, 150 years, and to justify? Personally, I'm not going to argue public need, I think public need is there, so public need, Wade, correct me if I'm wrong, it's fake ball, public need has to exist in tandem with the change of character.
Exactly, that's correct.
But I, I don't, does anybody disagree that there's not a public need for housing in Ocean Springs? I guess you could disagree that you need R2 housing.
No, we have two projects that worked already, the last two, over on Riley Road, they haven't started yet, but they're here.
Well, I mean, the question, I mean, it's all about timing, I don't know anymore how close those are, but those are probably pretty close to being built out, this one's probably, I would guess, if they break ground in a year, I'd be surprised.
Two apartment complexes.
Yeah, I mean, sure, but your pool is different on apartment complexes sometimes, too, you know, I don't know.
There's living space.
Yeah, I, I think there's public need, you don't have to. Anybody have anything else, questions, comments, concerns? Feel free to call the audience.
All right, well, Joe said, call the vote, anybody, anybody, anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
Recommend denial of rezoning from R1, low-density residential district to R2, low- median residential district for 4414, Hansell Road.
I'm going to just pause your motion and look at the attorney, is it better to have a specific reason stated in the motion, or is that?
I think you can, you're describing all you can.
All right, Joe has a motion to recommend denial, do I have a second for a denial motion, is that Marshall? All right, I have a motion on the floor for denial, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So you voted, yeah? All right, so that would go denied, unanimous, just to remind, let me ask, Carolyn, is this, this is going to wait, correct?
This will be advertised for a second public hearing at the first meeting in December for the board.
All right, so everybody needs to know that, what was it, what was the date?
The first Tuesday.
December 7.
December 7.
All right, so there will be a second public hearing on this particular project on December 7th at the Board of Alderman Meeting, same bat dome, same bat place as we're at now, Tuesday night, December 7.
And it will be advertised again, so any input can be emailed, ahead of time will appear and be presented to the board, along with the input that was received here today.
Yeah, so everything, actually, one more little piece of housekeeping, we did receive two handouts, one was Beambel Place, letter we'll call it, and the second was the traffic count, that was all that was handed out, correct? You had the one, you had the other? All right, do I have a motion to accept those into the minutes?
Andrew, can you add my PowerPoint?
Can I add PowerPoint as well?
So.
Second, motion to accept all three into the minutes, motion Matthew, second, Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Donovan, I would have definitely blazed over that. If y'all didn't hear, Carolyn, you are allowed to and encouraged to send in your letters, thoughts, even, you can send them to email, do you want those to you?
Yeah, the email, there's a planning admin, the email address that was in the public notice, planningadmin@oceansprings-ms.gov, that's just the best, the best way to go ahead and have it, and then we have it in writing, and we'll incorporate it in the packet that goes to the board.
Okay, so it will be advertised again, y'all will get a second chance, both those in favor and in the opposition, please comment, show up, and, 12:07. Item 4E is going to be another public hearing, this is, give a minute for anybody to step out, huh? All right, that's probably quiet enough. Item 4E is going to be a public hearing, this is going to be an amendment to the Code of Ordinance issued from the City of Ocean Springs, pending Appendix D, Article 5, Section 510, Item B10. This is related to short-term rentals, do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So. Ooh, that's, that's interesting.
I'm going to give Marshall the motion and Joe the second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, Matthew, your name's not going to be on the record.
No, that's fine.
I just said it now, it's on the record. All right, so this is going to be Wade or Carolyn?
I'm going to have to say Carolyn.
I'm done. I'm done for the evening, thank you.
You going home?
No, he's not going. This was discussed, actually, at either the last meeting, I believe, and I did talk to the board as far as getting their direction to bring this to you, so what you have in front of you is a draft to change in the ordinance in the section that Andy so, so eloquently read to you, to increase the cap, right now, we have a cap of 50 residentially-zoned short-term rentals. Right now, we have a cap of 50 residentially zoned, short-term rentals, and this does not include the commercially zoned properties, of 50. And the proposal, based on discussions between both this commission and with the board, we're proposing 75 as the new cap. Like I said, right now, we have met the cap of 50. We do have 50 active permits. There are up to 11 applications now on the waiting list in various phases of, and stages of review. So there is a waiting list and a demand for those short-term rental permits. So it doesn't change anything else about the regs and requirements and process, it just would increase the cap citywide for residential short-term rentals only. And I've kind of got that information in for you. One of the pieces of the conversation had been complaints regarding short-term rentals, and we did confirm that there have been zero complaints registered either through a police department or building code enforcement directly related to the use of the property as a short-term rental. Any of the complaints or calls that were made either from or about the property were medical calls, usually from, mostly from one particular property and the property owner when there was an aging family member, and people calling about noise or other things emanating from outside the short-term rental. So we did confirm that there were no complaints on the properties that have been permitted to date.
And outside, not like they're hanging out on the front porch?
Right, right, no, you know, if there was...
Not related to...
Right, a homeless parking person walking down the street, and the call came from or referenced this address. So, but there was no direct link between the person who was occupying the property as a short-term renter for any of the active permits in the, and that's for the entire three-plus years that we've been doing short-term rentals, looking all the way back. So just to kind of share that with you. So that's what's in front of you is to, the proposal is discussed to raise the cap to 75, or if there's a number, another number that you all wanted to propose, but that was kind of the consensus that I received from you all at the last discussion.
Okay. Anything before we have an appellate?
I have a quick question. Assistant, probably title of my, considerations for ordinance, second line, it's got Shaw, it's 835, parentheses 15.
Yeah, that's what happens when you use an old memo. It had been 35 originally, and it was raised to 50. So when it was, when the short-term rental ordinance was originally created...
Should be parentheses 35?
So actually, it should be, right now, it says 50.
The current number is 50.
The current number is 50. I just used a, use a verbiage from an old memo. Thank you for putting that.
You might have any other things before, I mean, we're in a public hearing.
Did the Board of Aldermen just make a recommendation to...
They basically directed me to go ahead and work on this, you know, to start the process. I just wanted to get their, their input prior to, it wasn't like a formal directive during a meeting, I just kind of discussed it with the mayor and the Alderman, and was directed to go ahead and, as staff, to bring this to you.
My question is, the first 35, started 2015 and up.
Correct.
When was the date that we moved it from 35 to 50?
December 2019.
Yeah, 2019, yeah.
So we reached, were we at, we were at 30?
We were very close. We were like five away. And that number fluctuates.
I think we had the applications that were already gonna push this over or something.
The number fluctuates because people don't renew, and then a permit becomes available. So actually, 60 properties have been permitted over that time period, but 10 just did not renew and opened up a spot.
So we've effectively only seen an increase of 15 over two-year periods?
Correct.
All right, well, we are in a public hearing. Anybody got anything else before we... I'm just, I'm not gonna do for or against, because I don't really know what that means in this situation, but if anybody wants to speak about raising the cap on short-term rentals, please do so now. I'm pointing to ask everybody, anybody on short-term rentals wants, twice sold? Okay, do I have a motion?
We're in a public hearing.
I don't even have to ask. Kevin, motion to get out. Alan, seconds to get out. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are not in a public hearing. Does anybody wanna take a stab at a motion, or have any other comments to consider?
I'll just go back to kind of some things I've talked about before, is I just think there should be something besides just permitting and leaving them if they're active, you know, we have some way to, if we're gonna cap and we're just gonna keep expanding it, if we're managing the ones that are actually being, I don't know, like how many are permitted that people aren't using, and are we allowing them to just keep them here over year, and is that occupying a spot?
Well, we don't really, I mean, we can check their, their calendar to see if it's blocked out, but that doesn't necessarily, a lot of people will block out time for their own personal use of their property. We really don't monitor how, you know, that, how often it's being used and what the demand is for it. That would really be, I don't know that we have that information available without some sort of legal action, I'm not really sure. Now, if there is a problem, we can always ask for their guest list, that's in the ordinance, but that's usually if there is a problem and they need to find out who was staying there at any particular time.
What's the fee? Is there, there's a fee to have it re-inspected and everything every year, but it's...
It's $50. $50, and they have...
25 for the occupancy and then 25 for processing.
So you could hold a permit at the cost of only $50 a year?
Yeah, and some people do, and some people may only rent it during festivals, and that's fine.
But they do still renew every year?
They renew, as long as they renew every year. We really don't monitor the, you know, the success of it, I guess you would say. But that's why I think some people, at the beginning, thought they were gonna rent it more, or that it was gonna be easier than it was, and they just decided not to do it anymore. Sometimes the properties changed hands, but, you know, people found that it wasn't just a, an easy buck, that there was work that had to be put into it, and they just decided not to.
Now, was your comments in relation to you are against raising it, or against just having a cap at all?
I mean, I'm kind of against having a cap. I just think there's gotta be a different way to manage it. If we're just looking at it as we're just gonna keep bumping it up every time, like either defining where it can be, or defining how many, we're gonna deactivate any one time that's kind of a more finite number, rather than...
I think it's just, you know, it's moderation, it's, you know, modest increases over time, and then if it does become a problem, you know where to stop, and then maybe ration it back down. Instead of just opening it up and saying, hey, anybody can do it, that's a good point.
From a staff, from a staff perspective, we appreciate having the cap. It helps, does help us to manage it when Amanda's talking to people, when they call. It kind of lets them know that it's not something that we are just going to give to everybody. A, you have to go through a process that's not an easy process, and B, they're in demand. And it does allow us to report on it, to say, you have so many available, and it allows the board to kind of look at it from time to time to see the success of it or whatnot. So we appreciate having a cap.
And my, my only thought on that was like allowing anyone to do it, but making it almost more stringent or more difficult for them to do it, but it's kind of a burden on us.
It's pretty, it's pretty difficult right now. Some people, that's why some people sit in the queue for years. We've had some people on the waiting list for years because they just, they thought about it, and then it's just too much work, and they haven't done it.
Right.
So we have their application, but they've made no action on it in years, so some of them hang around for a while before they actually go forward or withdraw.
All right, well, we have in front of us a recommendation for 75. To Carolyn's point, we could make that 76, we could make that 100, we could make that 51, or we could say we don't wanna increase it at all. Me personally, I'm fine with 75. Probably the dumbest thing I'll say tonight, which is saying a lot, but I like the idea of a cap, and I can't even tell you why. I just kind of like it, it just makes me feel good to have a number there. But I see your point about if you're gonna arbitrarily raise it every time, but at the same time, I was surprised that there's just been zero in six years, complaints related directly to it. It just seems by a law of averages, there would've been one.
Right.
Well, especially because we hear complaints on the front end, but not really...
A lot of it is perceived, perceived issues, and, and I think because the, the process is, you know, difficult. In fact, other cities have taken our ordinance and kind of looked at the process. If you're going to run the business correctly to where you're not a negative impact on the neighborhood, it's not a problem, you're gonna do these things anyway. So, yeah, we, and at least I can say that, you know, if people have not been happy with it, they haven't called and made an official complaint, which is our only metric.
I think a lot of people find out that property managers want 25 to 35 percent on short-term rentals.
Right, and maybe that's why some people don't renew.
And realize that they're just making them a lot of money.
Yeah.
That's kind of a self-regulatory business, if you don't do a good job...
If you don't get good reviews, you are done, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I recommend a motion, we recommend modification of Section 510 B10 of the current short-term rental ordinance to increase the citywide cap for residential zone short-term rental permits to 75.
Second? Okay. Motion, Marshall, second, Kevin, to do the 75 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This will also be advertised for another public hearing, December 7th.
Did I not put another motion on the table? Would it, yeah, I mean, wait, hold on.
I just think, you know, y'all kind of gibberdever down there, but kind of doing the numbers on it and everything, the logistics by it, I mean, we're only moving it up another 15, okay, to 75.
75.
25, okay. But over that period, looking at it and everything, we're gonna have to readdress this short-term down the road. I'm thinking realistically, you know, the ebb and flow, we've had 10 people not renewed, we've had four denials on and everything. I'm more in favor of the 100, you know?
So we have a motion, so, I mean, you would have to do a new motion, and we could do that if somebody supports it and seconds and votes, and vote out there. Let's see what happens, let's have fun with it.
You'd have to rescind this first one that you made and then...
Well, we've already made a motion in a previous...
Well, no, I just, I would like to hear, you know, rebuttal against of...
I kind of like the 25. If we have to come back in six months or a year and revisit it again, I'm okay with that.
I think keeping it at 25, that way, if we have to come back in six months, then we know, hey, this is probably...
Yeah, we get 75, and it's still not a problem. Or we get 75, and oh my goodness, now we got a wrong...
Or just two, three years from now, and it's like, okay, that's probably the right amount to move it up.
So I'm a statistics guy, so before we actually went from 35 to 15, which was...
That was 11 on the waiting list, so we got, so we're really only going up 14.
That was less than a 50 percent increase. Today, we're, you know, proportionally, we're making it even more than the first time.
I'm looking at it more of like the 15 bump, but that are, is that right?
Yeah, 14. Fifteen over two years.
Yeah, so I'm thinking those 14, and we can kind of play that versus what it was the first time, and that gives us a good idea of how quickly it's escalating.
And we really don't know the factors that made it escalate. A lot of it was, I honestly feel that, you know, some of the COVID and other things made a difference. I think people realized they didn't wanna stay in hotels, and they'd rather stay in short-term rentals. That could've played an effect. We don't know what caused it to increase, and we still don't know really what's going to cause it to increase, if it does again, or decrease. So it's not an issue for us if you wanted to do a 75 and then come back in a year. We really don't know how it's going to, how it's going to impact, if an increase is going to impact the level of interest, or if some of the ones that are already permitted have lost interest and, and don't renew. We have no idea of predicting that.
It's on Ocean Springs from now on, and so, yeah.
I mean, so my 100 verse 75, argument in favor of 75, Matthew, would just be that it gives us another stepping stone to decide, like, somebody said earlier, like, where's the tipping point when it does kind of get unruly, out of control, what have you? Gives us a...
I agree with that.
Second? Good?
I'm good.
All right, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Wait a minute. I don't know how you voted on that motion.
Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I did say you made them, but I didn't know.
Yeah, further...
And so the draft ordinance that is in your packet will be, then voted on after the public hearing to the board on December 7th.
And for the wealth of audience, yeah, you just said it, December 7th. All right, last, new business, item F, public hearing, adoption of UDC, an amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Ocean Springs, Mississippi, consolidating and updating the zoning and development regulations. Do I have a motion to go to public hearing?
So moved.
I got a motion, Kevin, second, Marshall, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, so essentially, the purpose of this is to re-adopt the UDC. There's no changes to the original UDC, except for the ones that I'll discuss in a minute for the RM1 reversion to R1A. This is presented as, based on the order from Judge Krebs on the recent lawsuit. So it's the existing UDC with the reversion. The pages that are provided in your packet are the only ones that changed as a result of the reversion from RM1 back to R1A, so that we didn't have to print out 385 pages for each of you. But those are the only pages that changed, nothing else did change, and the document is available. So there's two different colors. There's changes made in strike-through fashion in red and in gold. The ones that are done in red are the ones that we did prior to, the first advertisement of this, and the ones in gold were based on public input. We have also been working with the complainant in that lawsuit and their attorneys to ensure that we are following Judge Krebs' order and reverting to the, to the best of our ability from RM1 back to R1A. So that's what's in front of you, primarily for the re-adoption and the reversion.
Carolyn, can I pause you real quick?
Well, you can, because I'm, that's it, that's all I had.
Oh, I knew that. Stop you, I meant. Just to be clear, so we came in today, and we have November 7th, I don't remember the day of the night, right? So two days ago, we have a letter from Michael and Julia, and then we also had this. This appears to replace what was in our packet, correct?
Yes.
I tried to do my best, and it seemed like there was two...
There were some minor changes.
Just a couple, right?
Right, just, just a small page, and primarily, the reason it's so many pages is that table, those two tables, the 3.5 for uses, we included reference, we had added a footnote 13, and we just didn't reference it anywhere. So it really is attached to that table, so the column where it takes out R1A and just tells you to see footnotes 12 and 13.
So, you know, I got here a few minutes early, we only had 15 minutes or so, but at best I could tell, I tried to go to this and go to this, the new letter, the new packet, and just make sure that the things that don't say agree or what are changed.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to verify. Everybody understand what I was trying to say?
I think so.
Yeah, the ones in gold are all follow-up, but there were some additional ones that happened this week with some minor changes, and that's what I was referencing, the coordination with the law, and so, you know, to make sure that we caught everything, moving the reversion from RM1 back to the previous R1A, which was in a different format, so...
And to make a dummy proof for me, when, if we vote to approve it, this would be this plus parts that aren't reprinted here will be what is, okay, goes to the board.
When it, when it's presented to the board, it will have just one set of all the changes compiled, yeah.
Correct. One more dummy proof question for me. So the UDC, when it goes to the board and all this, these will kind of become officially into the UDC, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they are already.
But we've already voted on these, we've already seen them, you're not changing anything that we've already voted on, so that's why we have no, like, packet that's 30 pages, or probably more than that, okay?
Even when, when this is all said and done, and you have the final version with all the changes absorbed into it, that, that is a table that always stays in the front because it references back to the original adoption in 2019, and then everything that's happened since then. So actually, the ordinance number that comes from this will be added to that list as ordinances that were passed that impact the entire...
Will they actually, you know, will the actual words of general flood regulations be in the UDC, or just incorporate by reference number? I'll ask you, it really is...
Yeah, there's, that, that table is, is inside on the first page of the, of the UDC document, and basically tells you what sections and what were changed by what ordinance at what date.
So we're just using the R1A to go ahead and incorporate everything in?
Really, that's the only change that hasn't come before body, is the reversion of RM1 back to R1A.[1692.36]
Okay.
All right, um, I do have a question on page 20.
In the packet?
Yeah, so the Water View Preservation District. So this is new. It's going in here, right? Uh, it's in gold, so it's a new one?
Well, there were some things that were added back from the old code that specifically relate to now R1A. So is it, yeah.
The, yeah, the gold is new.
This is new.
Right.
I think only the R1A district.
I understand there's like a lot of, uh, time and effort on your part to assemble in this, but is it pretty safe to say the red and gold's kind of inconsequential to us, right?
Right, yeah, that was just the monitor, yes.
Y'all had it, then two, it was a public hearing, and they changed some stuff for the public hearing.
If it's not in black, and it's underlined and bold, and it was added, if it's strike-through, then it was taken out.
As per our, our.
Tracking.
Tracking purposes in the house.
Red and gold are, are the same to us, and that's what's changed.
So this has changed. This is gold.
It's being added.
That's being added to the.
That's being added to the UDC that. Water View Preservation District shall not, not exceed 50 feet in height as measured from Braeplink, which I assume is the ground.
In the R1A district.
In the R1A district.
It's under the section, and those were some things that were in the previous code that, uh, just needed to be reiterated specifically for R1A, because the format changed or, or something that it wasn't included.
I guess my honest question is, was this put in here just to get rid of the sayings?
No, absolutely not.
This was, this was done to, no, this was done to revert RM1 back to R1A.
I mean, this was in the.
That was in the previous.
Previous zoning regulations.
Correct.
As we see right here.
It's not new, it's reverted.
And it's being, it's what's been directed.
It's right, and it's per the judge's order, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
It's literally.
Trying to make sure there's not something.
I would argue.
Yeah, no, there's no changes. It's a reversion. I guess.
For a specific purpose.
Legally, it has to be verbatim, right?
Yes, as, as much as, as possible. There were some places where we had to add some references, right.
I'm just trying to confirm there's no, like, personal interest for any one development project or anything else. It's.
Well, it's interesting that you were asking these questions, only because it's, and, and, and we started in public hearing. I haven't even called for it yet. But I was here for all the UDC, so I forget that, like, other people weren't, so like, you know, I recognized it right away, but it's an interesting, I didn't even think about. You newer guys that are really.
Make sure everything's on the up and up.
Really coming up.
All right, and I said, we've been going back and forth with, with everyone to make sure that we looked at it in detail and as, as much as we could. So it, it does revert it back.
Yes, gosh. I am clear now.
Okay. All right, so we are in a public hearing. Um, you may want to speak in favor or opposed. You're the last of the public, Mike. I don't know if it's single yet.
I'll stand up and say something for him.
All right, come on up, name and address at the podium. Got a limit to three minutes. If you go to four, I'll let it fly.
Thank you, Andy.
You never heard that from me before, have you?
I'm Michael on, uh, 303 Front Beach Drive. First, I want to, I, I don't know who was on the other side of the, uh, email and the messaging that I was working with on a lot of the writing, but I appreciate, uh, appreciate the effort, the way that was, uh, handled, the referencing of, uh, each clause, so we could tie it to the old language, and we could see what changes were being proposed. Uh, it was just very well handled, so Wade, that was you or your attorneys?
It was all, all of us.
That was, uh, that was.
It was a group effort by all of us.
That was, and I, I appreciate that. Made it a lot easier. It looked, you know, very, very familiar. I worked on a lot of contracts and legal documents in the past, and you get into that, going back and forth to get things right, and when folks are working hard to make sure that what they're doing is visible, you know, to everyone, it, it makes it a lot easier, so I want to thank you for that. You know, I, I'd like to also say I wouldn't be as constructive as positive tonight. I mean, you know, we're, we're, it, it was actually encouraging to watch this group and, and the decision you made on that topic, uh, earlier, where you were considering the proposal to rezone a property. Uh, I mean, to answer your question specifically, this property, this, this, these properties, may not be the right word, but, uh, we're, we're here because there was a decision that was determined to be illegal in rezoning the R1A to RM1. And, um, uh, that was done without any evidence of changes to neighborhoods, um, without any evidence of there having been a mistake. So that's, that's why we're here. So what we're putting back is what was in place before that decision was made. And I'd also point out, and I think Andy's point's an important one, uh, for this group's information that all of you are here, the staff, uh, and the planning commission both voted against the spot zoning or rezoning that was overridden by the Board of Alderman on a motion by Alderman Audlemann. So that, that's why we're here. We didn't have to be, but I'm glad we're past it, and we're beyond it, and, uh, uh, just, uh, you know, for future reference, um, the RM1, uh, is really not a good zoning district for velocity zone properties. It allows very dense, tightly spaced units in a condominium ownership model. And you, you know, you throw in private infrastructure that the city doesn't want to maintain. Our Mississippi Gulf Coast is, uh, we experience, and I think Andy probably knows this as a trade civil engineer, we experience the highest storm surges in the United States, and that's because of our geography. Uh, we have shallow water for a long distance. We have a long, uh, distance between our shoreline and deep water, which mitigates, uh, storm surges.
Let's keep it on topic, Mike.
These type of, these type of developments, I am on topics, these type of developments, uh, that are in the RM1, uh, don't need to be in the velocity zone. Um, you can imagine what a, uh, a, a big storm surge would do to a property that's, uh, developed like that. It would be bad for the city. It would be bad for the people that purchased the property. It would be bad for the community that, that lives around it, so, uh, thank you for your efforts. Uh, I appreciate that, and I, I hope, I would like Carolyn to get a chance to look into the final document. You know, I know you guys will be, you know, putting that together, and when you have a version that, uh, we can look at electronically, uh, just to read through it one more time before we go to some board of all, if you're both there, uh, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, we'll share it in the same way that we happen.
All right.
Yeah, I want to say something. For the record.
I was about to say.
For the record, Mike is wrong, because I didn't do nothing legal. We've been working on that UDC since before Mike even built the house over there. So he can say what he wants to about that, but we've been, we haven't worked on that for a long time.
Noted. All right, I was actually about to say you are technically part of the public today, so I, I misspoke when I said he was the last one. I didn't get your name and address. Can you infer?
Ricky Audlemann, 111 Opera Village.
There we go. Um, all right, we've exhausted the public comment, because we've exhausted the public, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved. Matthew, second, I'm sorry. Is that a second from you? Alan, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are out of public hearing, and I'll entertain either some discussion, or if anybody wants to motion, feel free to do it at your discretion.
Motion lead, Karen?
Maybe a motion on the UDC first.
Please, please, move on. Just move on this.
All right, I don't have the depth of experience or history with it, as a lot of you people do, but I'll go for it. Uh, motion to recommend approval of the attached ordinance draft to facilitate readoption of the UDC, including all subsequent approved modifications and reversion of RM1 to the previous R1A requirements.
Kind of said it better myself. Motion Kevin, second Marshall, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Again, this will be re-advertised for December 7th in front of the board.
To Mike's point earlier, I guess the re-advertising, that would be when you have a completed document anyway, so he would get.
Right, well, it'll go to the paper tomorrow. Basically, I'll just, like I said, we've been going back and forth in those pieces, but there will be a revising the mode that just presents it as one set of changes.
Y'all do, you almost stay out of this for a minute. Um, all right, so we are down to general public comment. Anybody want to speak to any non-agenda item? Once twice old, commissioners forum. Anybody want to speak? I'm gonna speak, but I'll reserve mine at the end, unless. I'd like to give a personal thanks, uh, to the planning staff. They're always doing an excellent job. Bang-up job. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna, Mike's not gonna like me. Um, I'm gonna bring up something that I brought up during the UDC and ask again, and just put it in the mind. The commissioners don't do anything with it today, but today, we had a item for 201 Front Beach that is a R1 zone that we approved a non-conforming lot, because R1 has 100, and this didn't have it. Today, we went into, uh, 227 Front Beach Drive, lots 1, 2, and 3, which is an R1 zone, which had three 70-foot lots, 76, I don't know, it's, you know, 70-something foot lots that didn't have it. Uh, we talked about, you know, the R1 zone on Hanshaw. I don't know how that's gonna turn out. I'm assuming the developer did some sort of pro forma, decided he couldn't make money or what have you. We'll kind of put that away, but I don't know if everybody read Donovan's report. Um, he, he does a pretty decent job in that report, and it kind of struck me, uh, some of his breakouts on it. It just seems to me, and I said it at the thing, and I'm gonna say it again, it seems like our, our R1 zone is just prohibitively big. And I think that's a terrible idea for propagation of Ocean Springs beyond our lifetime. Everything you see now, I don't know, Alan, if you can speak to this better than me, but, uh, smaller lots are in higher demand than larger lots, kind of in general. A lot of millennial-type, young adults are, are even going almost to townhomes and everything because of lack of maintenance and everything. Uh, I didn't see it then. I don't see it now, why the R1 has to be 13.5 and 100-feet-wide lots. See, I'll just think about that. If anybody agrees with me, let me know, and maybe we'll go back at it, but if y'all like them, then we'll keep them.
Well, I 100% agree with you. I think we're taking these very general guidelines and trying to make them work in an area that it, it, it doesn't really make sense, and what's happening. I mean, that was kind of my point about the, even on one Hanshaw property, it's just the development that's happening outside of Ocean Springs. It's gonna be more of an issue for, I think, Ocean Springs in the future, because I think we will eventually be, the city will be part of that, and take, take that. And we're looking at these things, we're pushing these developments out there, because they're, and I get what you're saying. I'm just, I think these, uh, the density in the city is not but the enemy. I mean, it's, it's not, and I don't see why everyone fights it. I don't, I don't understand why we can't, you know, why can't build on historical fight lots, uh, that are in town.
If they're already there.
If they're already there.
You have to come to us.
Well, like, the one I, I was asking you about the one day about if somebody's owned it since the same, for the same period, or since 1985. 85. You can't build on a historical fight lot in a subdivision when there's lots next door to it that are built on those historical fight lots. Like, why does that make sense?
I just don't think we've gone through, and this is kind of to your point, that it was, when was the ordinance, the R1, the 80, was it 85?
It was mid-'80s. It was done over a period of time between the, like, mid-'70s and early '80s.
Catching, catching the height of urban sprawl. So we, we, we had an ordinance that was made to catch the height of, of suburbia. And, um, and we haven't looked back at it for 40 years, and we haven't changed it in 40 years. We haven't reacted to anything.
Not on that level, no.
He, uh, Mike talked about the, you know, velocity zone and the changing of the landscape and storms. I mean, the property, his house is on, I believe, is a hotel from 1897 to 1969. It was changed by Hurricane Kimi. Um, the, the landscape has changed. The neighborhoods have changed. Um, the idea that they're not allowed to change, and we're not obviously in that change right now. We're, you know, density is very much encouraged in the area you're talking about. It's kind of flat. We don't, we don't allow that.
Thing about it is, Ocean Springs, the ebb and flow of how the town is changing, yes, there is a need for, uh, more density property within Ocean Springs. One unique thing about Ocean Springs is our R1 zoning. That's what so many people that come to Ocean Springs that are willing to put a really nice home on a piece of property is the fact that it is how it's, now.
I would disagree with that.
No, 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 I, I mean, I look at Harrison County, Hancock County, uh, all over and everything, and we are at the 13,500 on R1. That's very rare.
But it's not accurate in the downtown area.
It's not accurate, because it needs to be looked at over, there needs to be some plan to come out and look at it and say, okay, does there need to be a new zoning in toll for that? But the thing about it is, is when you have other big subdivisions that have come in that have been plotted as R1, it's really hard to go around it and say, make smaller subdivisions in it.
Well, we just talked about the fact, I think, tonight, that there aren't, there aren't those substitutions coming in, because it's.
But I think the tool that we need to look at is come up with a, a good plan moving forward on welcoming the density into Ocean Springs.
So I got to, and, and I think maybe the second question or comment I have against you is, you just answered, but so, for instance, today, we denied them to go to R2, which, no, if it was a, I think the R2 rules should be on R1. That's just my opinion.
Right.
So if it was like, if that was R1 and R3 was R2, I would agree with that. Now, I, you know, I don't guess I voted, but it's different. Hold on. So does the 13.5 go all the way to east? I mean, is, is East Ocean Springs a 13.5 neighborhood?
Once you cross over, yeah, let's say, just strike it up, once you cross over Hanshaw right there, you start going into more of your R2.
Right.
Uh, I mean, you look at Gulf Park State's county and everything, but that is part of Ocean Springs.
Let me ask you this. Who's buying 13.5? And here, here, this is what you, I'm trying to prove my first question. Who's buying the 13.5? Who wants to be in those?
The thing about it is, you're getting hung up on the whole millennial flip right now. Okay, the kids that were born in the '70s and '90s and everything. Okay, okay, the Gen X and all. But the thing about it is, there is a turning point that I'm starting to see. People are wanting more of quality and everything within Ocean Springs and all over, okay? Um, looking at what Biloxi has done with their R1 and their densities and everything to what Ocean Springs is. You can't really compare it because of how Ocean Springs is set up. When we have downtown, which is R1, which really should be R2.
Should.
I would say that my hesitancy would be is, once you reduce the requirements and allow higher density and smaller lots, you can never go back. Once those houses are built, those lots are done, you're never going back. Nobody's ever gonna take two houses, knock them down, combine the lots, and build one house only.
But I think our point, or my point in that, and it's just to talk about, it's like that the neighborhoods already are. There aren't two of those. We're putting, we're retroactively putting them on neighborhoods that weren't 13,500 lots in the first place.
You're requiring, you're requiring new subdivisions to meet a code that we really, nobody's ever met. I mean, not ever, that's obvious.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's because the code is what we want. This is, this is the standard we want. Regardless of what's already been done, in the future, this is the standard we want.
We put it over an area that it doesn't fit, and that's what makes it impossible for anything to, to then happen. I mean.
But we stand to lose 75, $364,000 homes plus tax base and everything else, because R1 is too restricted. Now, see, when I hear them standing up and talk about demand, I will say if demand is that high, they're gonna build something there. They're gonna figure out how to do it in R1, and they're gonna build something that's gonna be beautiful, and it's gonna be nice. You know, and yeah, maybe they don't get to build five extra houses or seven extra houses, or whatever it is.
They might charge more for the ones they're offering.
But why is that, you, you're looking at that, I guess, you're thinking it's better that they're on these bigger lots. That's what your point of view is on that, and it fits more in the neighborhood, in that area.
You're a choice. I would always buy a house on the largest lot I could afford. Uh, people are buying these small lots, because that's all that's being offered.
Well, because that's all they can do.
And that's one reason that they're not building R1.
But my point is, the, the boomer, sorry, generation is the one that wants that.
But if you go out to the wool market, they got houses on acre. It's probably hard to find an open one for some of your kids are gonna live in.
But the acre out there is a super issue. You have to have an acre of.
Well, what I'm saying though is, people want space. Certain.
Some people.
Certain demographics, people want space.
So we just eliminate any developer that doesn't want to cater to one group of people?
Okay. I mean, I, I don't think.
You can do what we've done on all these things. If, if you don't agree that that particular thing in the neighborhood and where it's going, then you can change down. But every time you do away with one thing, then now you're taking R2s and making them R3s, which becomes easier and easier to slide down the slope.
Well, I think R2 should be R3.
But like I said with the, uh, with the Hanshaw one, that, uh, by the time you put the conservation overlay on it, you're gonna end up with an R2 anyway. It started at R1, but it's gonna end up as R2 essentially.
I think that muddies it up a little bit on the front end, because I agree with you on that. You can't really, it, it's like where we, it, it needs to be a conservation subdivision on the property, by looking at, very generally looking at the property. Right, you can kind of tell that, and that's what they're gonna have to do, um, because there's gonna be so many wetlands and so many low-lying areas, but how do we really count that without that, without looking at the preliminary flat or sketch flat? I mean, uh.
Yeah.
I don't think that should have been changed.
And I'm not sure. It's just me.
I do think the neighborhood.
I prefer to have more restrictive codes with more individualized variances and exceptions.
But that's.
But we don't get in trouble. We don't accept anything, and we have the only cap on variances that I've ever seen. We have a 25% variance cap, and mirror image Biloxi, a 25% variance is approved administratively by the planning director. I mean, I mean Carolyn. Like, I can get a two-and-a-half-foot setback variance just by saying, Carolyn, I want that. She can just sign it off. Whereas we have to send somebody through two months of meetings, and that's the most you can get. That's another one of my issues, but I brought that up too many times, so I'm saving that one.
I like to do this once every six months, really kind of stir the pot real good, but also it's into variance cap is one of the dumbest things in the world.
But once you go smaller, you're never going bigger. It's never going back.
You know, I agree with that on it. It's, once you go one way, it's, it's that. You can't back up.
That's absurd.
That is absurd.
You can't make the people that built under that code go up.
Right, but we look at developments all over, but I think something in toll that we're kind of having is, and I think there's some concern and everything. This is a very passionate discussion, okay? I think we all have our thoughts on it and everything. Something that I think we need to do is put a think tank together on something like this and work with the department and everything, and maybe moving forward on it. But I think we're kind of getting the attorneys kind of motion a couple of times, that we're getting kind of borderline on, we need to.
Well, this is something that we could schedule a workshop on at a future date. Well, this is something that we could schedule a workshop on at a future date just for discussion and, you know, so we'd be a little more prepared, have some information for you, but
It has to be public.
Yeah, I mean, it would be advertised and available to the public, it'd be a work session, but that would probably be the appropriate vehicle tool to use to kind of suss these things out, to see if there's any recommendations that you all want to make or anything that you would want staff to look into further, but we'd be happy to, you know, look at scheduling that probably after the holidays to
What does it, y'all think about it, yeah, I mean, if I'm the only one that agrees that it's too big, there's no sense in doing it, so let's just, we'll fill it there, but y'all think about it, we'll talk about it next week and see.
I think a good way to look at it is like, what percentage of the properties that are actually zoned and are complying? You know, I mean, that, look at that, and then you decide right there, because that's just a fact.
I think we, actually, we had done that as part of the UDC, we've got some maps that looked at that very thing, you know, what subdivisions don't comply with the, their overlapping zoning district.
Especially those that were done before the districts were laid down.
But more importantly, we should probably revisit the comp plan.
That is on the schedule, the mayor is working forward with that, probably next year, I know it's in the budget to do, so we are going to be reviewing the comp plan over the next year.
But even if it is just one person that thinks it, I'd still like to hear about it.
Yeah, well, let's, you said you have some, you think you have something?
Yeah, to dredge them up and find them, but yeah, we've got some maps of that.
You can find those and just command it.
I mean, it was primarily subdivisions that were built before the zoning districts were created and, you know, like, there's a lot of, especially in the old downtown area, there's a lot of old subdivisions that are a lot smaller than even the zoning district.
They established it at R1 and it was too big, that'd be a mistake in the original zoning.
Well, it was, yeah, well, that's where you get historically plotted, legal non-conforming, you know, it was plotted prior to
You can make an argument for anything you want, really.
Well, yes, you can argue about anything, but
See, if you can find some maps or some information, get it to Amanda.
There were PUDs before the UDC.
There's PUDs till 2015, I think I was
Approximately, yeah.
I was on the planning commission
Stillwater was the last one, and Sweetwater.
And I wasn't here for the state, but I was only here for the
And what were y'all's feelings about this at the time, or why was that, I'm in favor of them?
That they, some of them were implemented outside the parameters of what it was intended prior to, you know, in years past, and I think there was just a perceived problem with it, that it was a flawed ordinance and it was voted to rescind it, and that's why the conservation subdivision kind of took the place of that intent, which is to allow the same density but flexible lots.
But if, like tonight, if that property had been tried to be rezoned as a PUD, you know
Well, you wouldn't rezone it as a PUD, you would develop it as a
So it would still have to go through an initial, or how would they have done that?
Well, there's two layers, there's what the zoning district is, and then, like I was explaining, the conservation subdivision overlay, which used to be similar to the PUD as an overlay, is just another tool in the toolbox. So if you have a piece of property like this one that has a lot of wet areas or potential wetlands on it, it doesn't change the density, the zoning establishes the density, but this would allow you to make some smaller lots and move them out of the way.
You can change what you want.
Right, so it's, the overlay is a development tool, not a zoning tool, you don't zone it as a conservation overlay, you develop it as one, if that makes sense.
I don't like things getting muddled up as like project versus property, and that's what I find it, that we do that all the time, I mean, anybody's doing any property, they're telling us about the projects.
Right. Well, and they want to give you an idea of what they intend to do, which
If you had a PUD But then they can walk out the door and go do something else.
Correct.
If we give it the
That's why we ask you to look at the worst-case scenario because
So why are we even letting them talk about the property?
They can present what they want to present.
A PUD, he could have kept it R1, but within the parameters of what our PUD ordinance is, so he would not have had to rezonate.
He would have to have seen the project before.
You would have.
That's what I mean, that gives us more control of the situation.
With a PUD, you would, I like a PUD.
It's because he's rezoning it and then doing an overlay, they're two different things.
And I think, I didn't, see, it was already voted out before, I just had the last two projects that were approved on it. Long story short, I don't know that it was a very good PUD ordinance.
It was not, it seemed to have been, there was several projects done before I moved into this office that seemed to have been taking liberties with it, so it wasn't maybe clear, and that's why it was, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't in the office at the time, but it was voted to rescind it because some of the developments weren't, they didn't like them, the way they turned out. So, the intent and spirit of it is what I consider we were able to include in the conservation subdivision, which allowed for flexible lot sizes without increasing density.
At the cost of 40% of the land, don't forget that.
You know, it, because that justifies the ability to make small lots, if you're, you only need to be doing it if there is some sort of natural feature, such as wetlands that you're going to preserve.
But I guess we're kind of taking the conservation into account and kind of not versus the PUD where you would see the plan, or get the general concept of the
With the PUD
Project before you rezonate.
Right. You can get the density increase for, you wouldn't necessarily have to have wetland